Hello, everyone. This is Christina Isbell. Hi. I'm going to go ahead and start this evening. So hello and welcome to the Michigan City Commission for Women's 10-year anniversary celebration on women's equality. This is such a special evening as we gather together to honor the past 10 years of good work, to share our present goals, and to hear from some important women from Michigan City, both past and present. My name is Christina Isbell, and I am the current president of the commission. I have been on the commission for six years to represent the nonprofit sector. I wanted to get involved and interact with the community. I wanted to understand our issues helps to support the mission to achieve equality for all. I was the artistic director at Christina's Dance for over 25 years. And lately, I've been purging my costume costume in my memorabilia bins, and I have found a number of Ms. magazines from my youth. And as I thumbed through those magazines, it is almost as if the world is still in that same place with equality for not only women, but all people: Black, Latinx, Asian, Indigenous people, and the LGBTQ community. It is up to us to continue to learn and evolve as people, and to help be a part of positive change and need. I have found the Commission for Women is an outlet for me to continue to reconnect and be involved with my community, and to fight with issues that I believe in. But the reason we are here tonight is to celebrate the women who have volunteered their time and energy to be a part of this commission. In the 10 years, there have been seven presidents, four city council liaisons, and 22 commissioners. At this time, I would love to ask all of the past, present commissioners and city council liaisons to stand up, so we can thank you for your service and dedication to the effort we're working on. In the 10-year history of the commission, we have donated over $37,000 to support projects for individuals, students, and teachers, organizations, and special projects. We have supported a number of high school students, and one of my favorite stories was a young dresser named Yala Martin from Michigan City High School. She was the only one qualified with state championships. We helped cover the cost of her special equipment and uniform, as well as transportation to the finals, where she won and placed first in her division. Her mother Veronica Martin became a commissioner a year later. We have supported numerous organizations: from the United Way, Stepping Stone Shelter, Soulsteppers, Minority Health, as well as Dubro. Dubro is a wonderful advocate for children that provide positive family support and education. All these organizations are doing important work, and it is our honor to support their impactful programs. Over the past few years, we have sponsored some amazing special projects: from the Lubesnik Center for the Arts Well-Behaved Women's Suffrage exhibit, which aligns with our focus on the women's suffrage and the anniversary of the woman's right to vote. We were also a sponsor of the Naomi Anderson Sculpture Project, a multi-year project that you will hear about later in the program, Commissioner Bonnie Chak, who was also on the Naomi Anderson Project Committee, and helped create a digital database of Naomi Anderson's work at Purdue University. It was such a huge undertaking and created a sense of community pride and focus on an unsung hero here in Michigan City. As a matter of fact, we have a number of those project committees members here. Could you guys stand so that we can also thank you for your amazing work and such a project?[268.02][268.02](APPLAUSE). We will not only hear from some amazing women this evening, we will also learn about some important women from Michigan City. As you will see at the tables, there's a yellow card that lists some clues to some special people. We would love to play an interactive game with you at dinner. So at dinner, at any moment, if you or someone from your table wants to get up and read those clues aloud, and we will all guess as a group. Yes?
It would be lovely to be the first one to share this. The woman of aderter lived from 1933 to 1987. She was the first African-American female to be a licensed Indiana real estate broker in Michigan City. She was the secretary of the Indiana Chapter of the Manual Association of House and Development officials. She was an associate pastor, served on Charles West House College of Fun Committee, led the advisory board for San Anthony Hospital, Salvation Army, advisory board, Presbyterian Center, member. She taught Sunday School, and served as secretary and financial consultant for church. Does anyone know who that is?
Maybe Sam. And I hope that you all can share with us who your woman is, and what an important woman you are, and always be answered for. Try not to look at the booklet until after you read your clues. But you can also take home that fabulous booklet of the important women from Michigan City, which was created by Bonnie, who just spoke there, with Albertine Allen and Joanne Anquist. Bonnie and Albertine are two unofficial official historians of Michigan City. So if there's anything that you want to know, they are the ones to ask, and you will hear from both of them later in the program. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce our first speaker, Sharon Karns. She was the first president of the commission and a former city council member. So thank you so much.[423.81][423.81](APPLAUSE).
Thanks for the opportunity to reminisce, reflect, and celebrate the first years of the Michigan City Commission for Women. Ordinance 4167, establishing the commission, passed the city council unanimously and was signed by the mayor on December of 2011. The nine original members of the commission were, and if you would stand when I read your name, that would be great, Frances Vegas Field, Cassandra K. Hill, Faye Moore, Lynn Isbell, Kathy Dennis, Albertine Allen, Deb Chubb, and Beth Fisher. Thanks so much.[488.81][488.81](APPLAUSE). The makeup of the commission, representatives from nonprofits, education, the NAACP, Minority Health Coalition, League of Women Voters, along with the co-leaving members from the city council and the commission itself, ensured a diversity of talent and connections. It was the key to the success of the commission. Our first meeting took place in July 2012, but I have to say that the lead was not indicative of things to come. Much of the first meeting was a discussion of the direction we wanted the commission to take, and we wanted to take a broad approach to empowering women in Michigan City. Topics discussed at that meeting included access to higher-paying jobs for Michigan City women, mentoring women, making a connection with the State Commission for Women, information sharing amongst women, educating women on health initiatives and access to healthcare, access to high-quality childcare, and transitioning women from incarceration back into community. So let's look back at the commission, 2012 to 2013. What did we accomplish? The commission started actively involved with the recruitment of women for the Michigan City Fire Department. To that end, one of our commissioners interviewed the first female firefighter for the town of Chesapeake and brought back information about the testing process. We monitored and publicized the testing dates, and we distributed DVDs demonstrating the specific physical test required for admissions required. Eventually, the commission sponsored a local woman who worked with a Michigan City personal trainer to prepare her for the agility test portion for the Michigan City firefighter community. We partnered with the Michigan City Area Schools and made a center on C and D at the Michigan. That program introduced middle-school girls to a variety of non-traditional careers and gave them a chance to hear from women in those roles and to try hands-on activities associated with those jobs. I met with Kristen Gardner, the chairperson of the Indiana Commission for Women, and discussed our common interests in issues that face Indiana women. Some of the topics that we discussed included childcare, expungement, and women's health issues. In addition, the Michigan City Commission for Women worked on nominating Lynn Isbell for the Indiana Torch Barrel Award. In 2013, Lynn was recognized for her significant contribution citing a standard for other women in Michigan City and Indiana. In the process of researching the availability of family planning and women's health services, we discovered that Planned Parenthood was not listed as a provider by United Way's Dial 211 Information Service. After meeting with United Way representatives, we got this information added to five 211 information sites: LaFleur, Marshall, St. Joseph, Fulton, and Pascasco towns. We raised awareness on the problem of domestic violence, because a silent witness thinks that we're giving stepping stone shelter in the city. I can confidently say that we achieved the goals that we set forth in that first meeting. But we didn't attempt to do everything ourselves. We had guest speakers at nearly every meeting who introduced us to their organizations and help forge relationships. We collaborated with the Minority Health Coalition, Health Link, the Human Rights Commission, Stepping Stone Shelter, the NAACP, League of United Latin American Citizens, Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males, the League of Women Voters of LaFleur County, and the Lubesnik Center. They kept us engaged with the community and promoted our goal of information sharing amongst women. We also raised money to support our endeavors. Remember, I told you our first meeting was in July, and somehow, we pulled off our first fundraiser in September of that year in conjunction with a June summer theater production of Top Girls. We followed up in 2013 with our Women in the Arts Celebration at the Uptown Center for the Performing Arts. That featured visual of performing arts by some of Northland Indiana's most prominent female artists. I'm proud of all we accomplished in those first years. I know this commission has continued their prominent, active organizations striving to move Michigan City women forward. I also know that there's no shortage of problems and issues to work on, so I can't wait to come back here and sign here and see what you all have accomplished.
Thank you so much, Sharon. Now we'll have Keisha Ward offer us the word.
Good evening. As I said, I'm Keisha Ward. I'm the new director at My Little Health Partners of LaFleur County.[851.82][851.82](APPLAUSE). God, we just thank you for this great day, though. We thank you that your mercies are new for every one of you, and we thank you that this is an opportunity to give honor where honor is due, and we give you praise. God, we thank you for our time together and our fellowship, and thank you, God, that it's we are here, though. We thank you for new alliances, new friendships, and fellowship. God, we ask that you would bless our food, and our time, and even our travel home. May you say my prayer.
All ready? I am an important woman in Michigan City's history. I lived from August 18, 1920, to March 4th, or per se, 2007. I earned a bachelor's degree from Kent State University, a law degree from McKinley School of Law, a master's of science from Purdue University, and masters and doctorate degrees from the University of Notre Dame. I was a constitutional scholar and professor of political science. In 1980, I was elected to the Indiana House of Representatives, where I was an outspoken advocate for civil rights, who like that, and fair and free elections and rights of workers. I was later elected to the state senate. I served as a member of the National Democratic Platform Committee. I received the award for abolitionist of the year from Amnesty International. Who am I?[1054.32][1054.32](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, everyone. I hope you enjoyed learning about some of the important women in Michigan City. And I hope you all, at least at your table, see what you can do to share with the rest of us. I want to say everybody at your table, discuss these women and hopefully figure them out. And I hope you all enjoy looking at these books, if you get home and you have time to rehop them. These are some very impressive and inspirational women. We are standing on their shoulders. They're all from Michigan City, and it's just unbelievable what we have here. We have the Olympic gold medalists. We have, you know, best actress, but according to the Academy Awards. We have college professors, people who are the first in their professions, the first women in their professions to hold certain positions here, and just a lot to be proud of and to be inspired by. The Celebrated Naomi Anderson Project, the Lubesnik Center for the Arts exhibit, Well-Behaved Women, the League of Women Voters observance of the Centennial of the Graduation of the Nineteenth Amendment, special women's history projects, and our public credit schools, churches, and community organizations are some of the way that we celebrated women's accomplishments in 2020. The commission for women was proud to serve as a sponsor for the Naomi Anderson and Well-Behaved Women programs. And now, at this time, we are in a virtual tree from Karnessa Karns, also known as Karnessa the poetess. Karnessa serves as site coordinator at Boys and Girls Club of Michigan City and facilitates poetry and performance workshops for adults and children. She's the 2022 Lubesnik Center for the Arts Poetry Slam champion, and since 2016, has hosted a open-mic show called Bless This Mic in South Bend, which is soon to open a second location at Barker Hall locally. And after an introduction, Karnessa will give a tribute to Naomi Anderson. So please welcome Karnessa Karns, a poetess.[1221.71][1221.71](APPLAUSE).
For those of you who don't know me, allow me to introduce myself. I am a lyrical diac holy, a beauty and a beast, call from the womb to ride these beats, and serenade so sweet, and bless you with my peace, but I'm giving you all of me. I'm so charismatic, so magnetic, drawing you into the bigger picture. My tongue, a double-edged sword, words cutting deep for me, the truth leads. My purpose, service, provoking change and healing. My testimony is something like an amazing break. You got a problem with me? You got a problem with my faith? Stand on a chair and say that to my face. You could get addicted to my flow. My flow is lace, but not lace-like lingerie. But I am letting out my victorious secret. See, my secret be else should die, period. See, my gift bag boom for me. God, single-handedly, pull me from obscurity. He gave me a platform, and you best believe, I'm being groomed to be a prey. But I'm not thirsty to be seen. I'm just as effective behind the scenes, with no titles. I'm humble at best, quiet confidence. I am a poetess. That was the advertising. I'm too little to go by the pole. They told me to break a leg before I prepared.[1342.82][1342.82](LAUGHTER). This is my tribute to Naomi Anderson.[1351.82][1351.82](APPLAUSE). Naomi Anderson is from small Michigan City, but her activism pedigree says, "Small thinking ain't petty." She was bold and fearless for African-American rights, a natural war leader equipped with lioness's sight. Here her war, ready for takeoff, limitless. They watched her soar, blinders on, no distractions. No doubt about it, she was born in fashion for greatness. She encountered obstacles through the suffrage movement. She had undying hope. From Michigan City all the way to California, she fought for a woman's right to vote. Her fiery speeches gave life to the movement and sustained life in the movement in every aspect. Her bona fide words extract power on impact. She was determined and blessed. She studied, majored in, and passed all of life's tests. Focus on her vision, she was on a fast track. Pedal to the floor dripping, and she never looked back. She had her own style. She set her own pace, uniquely set apart to empower her own praise. Her Bible says she was the most important unrecognized citizen of Michigan City. But from now on, we'll celebrate and teach others about this great pillar of our community. I'm sure she had unforeseen ups and downs, tears shed in private when no one else was around. Miss Naomi was kissed by the sun, and could nobody block her shine. We can and will continue to overcome as we honor the legacy of her life.
Thank you so much to Karnessa and Bonnie. And you look good. And as I open up the second part of the program, I wanted to share with you our current focus for funding and research this year. This year, we will focus on women's and children's healthcare as these issues are at the forefront of our time. We know that in states that ban abortion, they have a less generous safety net and resources for the well-being of community children. Poverty and mortality measures are worse in states that ban abortion. Currently, Indiana spends $76 per person on healthcare, which is not enough. Indiana ranks 30th in the nation for uninsured women, 41st in, for more, maternal mortality, 39th for infant mortality, and 23rd for child poverty. Services will be harder to access and will affect Black women's maternal mortality rate pre-tired, exiled, white women. So what are we going to do about it? It is up to us to research and understand our issues. It is up to us to not be complacent and continue to fight for equality. The commission's goals are to create opportunities for communication, collaboration, and partnerships of organizations to identify and promote resources. We will be adding a resource page to our website in the next few months. We will hold listening sessions for organizations to help foster more partnerships and to work together to help support our community needs. We have also started a relationship with the Indiana State Commission for Women. And at this time, I'd like to introduce you to Jordan Teske Harrison, the new director who made it down for this evening's event.[1633.52][1633.52](APPLAUSE). And Jordan and I have been talking about having, she's going to set up some quarterly meetings with all of the commissions in Indiana, women's commissions in Indiana, so that we can find ways to support each other in women across the state. So thanks again for being here. It's not a time to be complacent as women today, as equality is not within our grasp. We need to stay vigilant and continue to stay aware and fight for equality in all areas of our lives. At this time, I'm going to introduce our next speaker, Albertine Allen. She has been on the commission for 10 years, has been doing the good work in Michigan City for her entire life, head start in minority health in Indiana. I love every time I am out with Albertine, as there's always one of three people that will come up and say hello to her. She truly is a wonderful person, and I enjoy working with her. Please come up, Albertine.[1698.82][1698.82](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here today this evening. I'm going to talk to you briefly about what equality means and what it means to the women of Michigan City. My, my, I changed my speech, she said, "Take it, man." And it goes like this: When you board the train of, uh, the train of life, you don't bring a lot of baggage. You're here, you're free, and you board, you board as a free person. The conductor comes along and says to you, "Have a good day," and you enjoy your trip." You can't hear her. The conductor comes along and says, "Have a good day, enjoy your trip." So when you board this train of life, don't sound with prejudices and that sort of thing. You're here, you're free, and you're innocent. So what does she say about you as a person when you go on your journey? Are you that person? That does something for someone, helps your community, provides service to the citizens in the community, which you did. Hopefully, that's you. But this is what I'd like to say: We are females. We're mothers, we're housewives, we're sisters, we're aunts, we're daughters, we're grandparents, and we deserve to have all of those. And we deserve to have all the opportunities that other people have. We are African-American, Native American, Hispanic, Latino, Pacific Islanders. But we still are females. After you boarded this train and you go through life, you have to fight a lot of fights. Females have to fight a power fight. We started out in 1800 fighting for the right to vote. But we served in World War I, the Vietnam War, even the underbound railroad was a war for us because it was hard drive. We fought in all the wars. Civil War was one of them. I so try to think about the songs that we sing and the things that we say when we attend events. "My country tends of the sweet land of liberty of the I slave." And the other one is, "My pledge, my pledge allegiance." "I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, for which it stands." Is that true or are those just things we say? Is that just something that we've said so long that it's just a passing thought? Is this what you want people to think about you when you get ready to leave that train? Your journey is ending. Are they going to say these things about you? "I am a good person. I support women's rights. I support my community, and I support my fellow men." When you leave the train, the conductor says, "I am to get off, I'm ready to punch your ticket." Have you left a legacy for your family, your children, the community in which you live? Have you left a good legacy? Or have you just been nullified? Has time to day. Think about that. When you do what you do in this community, what you do in your life, and what you do for others. Now it's a pleasure and an honor for me to introduce to some and present to others a very good friend of mine. She is a mother. She has six children, 13 almost 14 grandchildren. She's president of (inaudible). Tom McConville. She has a degree in education. She's a teacher, a lawyer. And we always said she was tenacious. The first time I met her, we were in a meeting at City Hall. And she gave us some things that she (inaudible) her word was. When I asked her something today, I wanted to guess what it was. It's (inaudible). We learned to know her. And I went home and I said to my son, "That's what she said." I said, "He said, 'Well, yeah, that's her, that's her.'" And so if you don't know her, you didn't understand that she is such a gracious person and how she is the perfect female. And only people in here have that spirit in Michigan City. I think it's who she presents the opportunity, please.
Albertine just told me she loved you. And I whispered back, "I love you too." To know Albertine is to love her. I think there's many people in the room that would appreciate it. A terrific human being. So I want to thank everyone for their warm welcome this evening. I've made some new friends, which is always fun for me. But I've also connected and reconnected with people that I haven't seen in a while. So it's an honor and a pleasure to be here. So Albertine talked about life, the course of life. And Karnessa talked about being a queen. So when I was mayor of Michigan City from 1996 to 2003, I took over when I was 39 years old. And to be honest, I really didn't know what I was doing. So you know that fake it till you make it? I did that big time. I was 39 years old and there was a lot of males who weren't keen on me. Can't figure out why, but I was a girl. And I had five little kids. And I was divorced. Not exactly the perfect profile. But what I did, Albertine used the word tenacious. What I did is really gathered people around me. One of my favorite peoples in the room, my police chief, Chief Simmons. He joined with me, Ralph Martin, some others joined with me. And we really worked hard to build a family. Because in a family, you take care of one another. You do the right thing and you work really hard to get things done. And that's what we did when we were together. So what I thought I would do tonight, I was the first woman mayor in LaCorte County. And I'm the second woman county commissioner. Where I serve right now as the president of the county commissioner. And I'm really proud of that because it's a bicentennial commission. So I've been asked, being this evening, I've had a couple of people saying, "Why do you do that? Isn't politics tough and it's dirty?" And I always say, "You know what? If you're in it for the right reason, you're in it to help people. You're in it because you are a woman and you want equality in your community for you and your children and then all the young girls who are coming behind us. That's the reason you do the hard work so that our kids can have a better community to inherit than the one that we have today." So I'm a big believer that you have to bloom where you are planted, shine your light, don't hide it under that bushel basket. It's important to share your talents with your community. So I thought I would tell a few stories and then I would tell you a little bit about my view of leadership. I work right now at Pretty Northwest and I head up the Leadership Institute where they really I work with some academics and there's all these theories about leadership. And I realize a lot of it, I'm not a theorist, I'm not an academic, but I learn by hard work and by doing it. And I think most of the people in the room that have had various career paths, neighborhood activism, you're passionate about things, you really learn by doing. And so that's, to me, that's really being a good leader. So in the 90s, there weren't very many leaders who were female. Sad to say, when I got out of college for 15 years and I started back as Ranford County Commissioner in 2017. And I looked around and I realized it doesn't look much different. There's still not a lot of women at the table. We are 50% of the population, I think actually 51% or 52% in the United States of America. And so our job is to encourage young people, young women and young men, to help us fix this world. We've got a lot to fix. In this last couple of years, those problems have gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. In the 90s, I have some really great stories. I go boring with my stories, but there are some really good ones. My first mayor's conference I went to, I was new and I was really nervous. I got lost on the way. And I went to put my things down at my table and it had my name on it, Mayor Sheila Wilson. And I went to get some coffee and an older man came up to me and he said, "Ms., would you get me some coffee, please?" And I had to make a split-second decision. I was like, "Okay, I could get really mad because I'm Irish and I've got a little bit of an Irish temper and I could get mad at him or I can just be gracious." So I said, "Absolutely, cream and sugar?" And I went and got this cream and sugar coffee and I brought it over to his table and said, "Mayor Smith," or something. And I put it down. And then I walked all around the view and went back and sat right across from him with my nameplate. And the look on his face, I won't forget it. You know, it was a different time. But still, women have to fight for their place at the table. Jean will attest that my leadership style was different than most of the people who ran the city at the time. Were you stood, most of them had never had a female department head or a female boss or a female supervisor, a female manager. And so when this girl mayor comes in at 39 years old and tries to give them directives, they weren't really in. So Jean will tell you, I had some techniques. So I made sure that everyone heard me, but I did it in a pleasant and resourceful way. So you don't need to bang on the table to be heard. You need to be a leader. And so I thought I would talk a little bit about leadership and how each one of you is a leader in your own life. You're a leader in your family. You are a leader in your faith community. You are a leader in your neighborhood. You might have a job where you are a unit leader at a hospital in healthcare and you're on your professional team. But leadership isn't about the name of the job you have. It's not, you don't have to be the CEO to be the leader. You can be the janitor. You can be the guy pushing the room. My dad's first job in America, in Cleveland, Ohio, was he got a job at the GM plant. He was a floorkeeper. And I said, "Dad, you're so smart. Why did they make you sweep the floor?" And he said, "She don't. They gave me a chance." And I was determined that I was going to be the very best floors reaper that they had ever seen. And that was the beginning of his career in America. So wherever you are in the cycle of life and the journey that we talked about a little bit earlier with Albertine's and talking about a train ride, we're all on a journey. And our job is to make sure that on that journey, we use the talents, we show our leadership, our leadership in whatever domain you're able to show it in. So leadership is a muscle. We all have muscles. When we learn to ride a bike or when we learn to shoot hoops, you're practicing a skill. Leadership is a skill. And the more you practice it, the more you flex that muscle, the better you become. So when I was 39 years old, I really wasn't a great leader. But I learned very quickly because I built a team around me and I learned to trust them and they learned to trust me. I urge you to see yourself as a leader no matter where you are in the journey of life. It's not about the role, it's not about the title. It's about a mindset. And it's about the responsibility that each of us has in our community to make it just a little bit better. We have talents to share. We have time to share. We have the passion to share. Whether it's reading a book at the library to a kid who needs a little extra help, helping in your neighborhood in any way you can. But challenge yourself. Challenge yourself. Use your words. I'm a big believer, and this is my, you know, I was an English teacher back in the day. But words are so powerful. You know, you often hear a pastor use words to inspire, transform your understanding of things. But you as a leader can use words to make change happen in the community. When I talk to women and to girls, I sometimes hear them questioning. And I say to them, "Find the words to frame the question." And then that's where your power is. And be a keen observer of human nature. So good leaders learn and learn and learn. And each one of us knows that human nature, the older you get, the more you know a little bit about human nature. But human nature is very instructive. If you're a keen observer of the humans around you, you will learn to be a better leader in whatever domain you want to be. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about women helping women and men helping women. We have a very great opportunity to share our talents with the people coming up behind us. And not just for women to help women, but for men to help girls also. Help them become strong and brave. You know, women are often, and when we raise our girls, I was really conscious of this as a young mom. My mom did a great job raising four daughters. And I was really determined. I had three sons and three daughters. And I was just like, one was a stepdaughter. So I birthed five children. But I was really conscious of making sure that my sons were sensitive and kind and knew how to clean a toilet and all those things that you're supposed to teach your children. But I wanted my girls to be tough and to be able to hold their own and to be resilient. Because I was concerned, and I have a concern still, the more social media that I observe, girls are raised to be nice, to be pretty, to get all As. While the boys are taught to run hard, push themselves, you know, be tough. And those skills are the skills that all leaders need. So I ask you, I'm raising a lot of grandchildren in my family and they're part of my life. Making sure that we are helping our young girls. It's not about prettiness. It's about using the talents, using your brain and contributing to your community. So with that, I wanted to just talk about making sure that each of us I was speaking to someone at my table and she said, "You know, I think that could be good, but is it worth it? Is it worth it as a leader to give up some of your space?" And I said, "Helping people is always worth it. Making your community better is always worth it." When grandma would call our house and say, "You know what? It drives me crazy that that stop sign in front of my when I sit in front of my window and I look out the window, that stop sign is crooked and it's, you know, it needs to be hit." It's a very small thing. And a lot of times people say, "Oh, that's not important." But you know what? It was important to that little grandma. She looked out that window every day and she deserved a straight stop sign. So it's just a little thing that you do as a human or one to another that makes leadership worthwhile. So I challenge each of you to flex that leadership muscle to continue to do the great work that many of you do in the community. And if you're a person that sits on the sidelines and isn't quite sure how to get involved, talk to some of the people in the room because there's lots to do. We are a community that has lots of needs, as all communities do. But there's always a place at the table for everyone. So thank you for welcoming me this evening.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? I'm not really a speaker, so I'm not sure why I'm (inaudible). So my role here, my name is Angie Nelson-Dyche and I serve as the council president here in Michigan City. But my number one job is the liaison of the Women's Commission. So I'm here to follow up with you guys and talk a little bit about this group because they have done a phenomenal job. First, I want to give a shout out. When I joined as the liaison, Fay Moore was the chair. And it was a trying time with COVID and having these virtual meetings and understanding the rules. So please give her a round of applause. And then I'll put (inaudible) stepped up to the task and said, "I don't know what I'm doing." And she has just been a breath freshener and supported her in telling her not to apologize. You're doing a wonderful job. This commission, and actually, all the commissioners, please, the current commissioners, please stand up that are here. Please stand up. Let me say this about you commissioners. When this process (inaudible) people think, you know, everybody's kind of like, "I don't know if this is going to happen. What's going to, you know, what's going to happen?" And Christine was like, "I don't know what I'm doing." And everything she was doing was right. And everything that they have been doing, the poll chairs, it's been right. Aren't you all having a fabulous time tonight? And I'm just telling you that Horizon Bank, I'm just trying to go ahead and give them a shout out. When I reached out to them, immediately Craig Dwight says, "I'm in, we'll take care of it, we'll be the type of sponsor." So I just want to ask you, thank them because it's not often that you can just call on somebody and they just step up and say, "Cut the check." You know? And when you got someone who can cut the check, that's a wonderful thing. And that's why we were able to have such a fabulous event this evening. So again, I just appreciate everybody who showed up because this is a wonderful event. It's nice to see people that I haven't seen. But also, thank you, Sheila, for agreeing to do this this evening. We appreciate you as the first woman mayor. You say girl mayor all the time. But I think it was important that that booklet that they decided, the commissioners decided to put together, please take that home and share that with a young lady. It is an awesome booklet that we need to be distributing at the school. It's a wonderful information. So again, I just appreciate that. So my next task tonight is, I'm introducing someone that I just introduced a month ago that she was kind of shocked by that, but that's okay. Ms. Patricia Boyd. And all I have to say is, Pat has become one of those sister-girlfriend, mother, auntie people to me, whatever you want to call her, but she fits that category. I've grown to know Pat from working with the League of Women Voters, but also being on council back in 2008 through 2012, I guess. 2011, December 30th, 2011. And Pat was one of those people that you could lend your ear to her and she would just sit there and listen and welcomed me and my daughters, you know, into her home, got to know her and Dennis very well. And she is genuinely just a good person. And we are so just thrilled that you support women's causes, not just the women's causes, but the environment, which is a direct impact and correlation to our health. And now she's doing it in the statehouse. And Pat is responsible for creating the Women's Commission. So give her a round of applause. So, give her a round of applause. And creating this. And now, here we are, ten years later, and we're still doing the work. So, I would like to welcome to the microphone Ms. Patricia Boyd.
Are you having a great time tonight? I am just so proud to be here. I have to admit, I didn't think you were so open to guessing. I'm not, I'm not quite remembering things when I want to say them. You can ask my grandson. Brandon, what did I come in this room for? I don't know. What'd you come in here for? That's where I get all my exercise. I really want to thank everybody else that has spoken tonight. Tiny, you did a great job. I liked the analogy of the train. That was awesome. Sheila, you're always a good speaker, and you made a great mayor. I don't care what they say, even if you were a girl. Leadership committees were perfect. My dad did the same thing. He said, "You know what? You can do anything you want if you try hard enough. And if you are ever in trouble, and somebody's trying to, you know, get you in trouble, you can get out of it, you can fight back, but never start a fight, but don't back away from one." That was, that was my dad's advice to all of us. There were eight of us. Today is Women's Equality Day, which is a really, really exciting day. I'm wearing purple. Some of you knew about this one, some of you didn't, but I think there's a memo about it, but Women's Equality Day, the color is purple. Okay. Women's Equality Day commemorates the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, granting the right to women to vote. The amendment was first introduced in eighteen seventy-eight, although women had been working actively to get the vote for many years before that. The U.S. Congress designated August twenty-sixth as Women's Equality Day. The resolution was introduced by Bella Abzuk in nineteen seventy-one, and finally passed by Congress in nineteen seventy-three. On January twelfth, twenty-second, nineteen seventy-three, Roe versus Wade changed everything. Then, on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, everything changed again. Yesterday's presidential proclamation in part, I had to cut some because it's too long, it said, "On August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty, women won the right to vote, and our nation moved one step closer to living out our sacred ideal that all people are created equal. On Women's Equality Day, we honor the movement for universal suffrage that led to the Nineteenth Amendment, celebrate the progress of women over the years, and renew our commitment to advancing gender equality and protecting women's rights. The commitment is more important than ever in the wake of Supreme Court decisions to overturn Roe versus Wade, I can't read my paper here, sorry, and eliminate a woman's constitutional right to choose. We will continue to defend reproductive rights and support the Equal Rights Amendment so that when we enshrine the principle of gender equality into our Constitution, no one's rights should be denied because of their gender. With the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, millions of women across the country were finally able to make their voices heard in our elections. Yet, many women of color who helped lead the universal suffrage movement were effectively denied those rights until the Voting Rights Act passed forty-five years later. Some states are restricting this fundamental right through provisions that overwhelmingly impact people of color, low-income communities, and people with disabilities. Women are less likely to have time to vote in person, with increased caregiving demands and disproportionate share of low-wage, inflexible work. The right to vote and to have that vote counted is essential to the future of our democracy. We are committed to ensuring women are fairly treated in the workplace, and have economic security, including pay equity, and end to discrimination in the workplace, and equitable access to good-paying jobs, particularly in sectors where women are underrepresented. We remain dedicated to lowering the costs of childcare and passing policies to help women navigate caregiving and work responsibilities. On Women's Equality Day, we celebrate the trailblazers who fought to deliver a better future for America's daughters. We recognize the work that remains to ensure that everyone can fully participate in our democracy, and make fundamental choices about their health and bodies, and to uphold our nation's promise of equality for all people." That's, that is his proclamation. There is, these are some of the reasons we have a Women's Commission in Michigan City. In the beginning, I met with women from across the region, Lake County, Porter County, Fort County, to discuss women's issues, many addressed in the presidential proclamation today. I wrote an ordinance and amended it based on input from women and women's groups. I had Angie to help me with that. Thank you, Angie. It passed on twelve nineteen, two thousand eleven. It begins with, "There is hereby established a commission for women. The purpose of this commission is to ensure that women and men have equal opportunity to function fully and optimally as citizens of the city, as equal participants in the economy, in politics and government, in education, in social development, in the system of justice, and in all other facets of life. The aim and goal of the commission is to increase awareness and understanding of the status of women, the needs of women and their families, and the issues they face. These include gaps in existing services and the impact of federal, state, and local policies. The commission encourages legislation to develop social services of particular benefit to women, to make them better educated, better connected, better aware of resources and opportunities, and better able to resolve challenges. It advocates for pay equity, better healthcare, affordable quality childcare, and better workplace environments with no sexual harassment. It maintains close working relationships with all the groups that have probably previously been mentioned. Of all the things I did as councilwoman, creating this commission is what I feel is my most important work, and I am so very, very proud." I've been ready to have served on this commission, and the work that you do and have done for the past ten years. The presidential proclamation concludes with, "I do hereby proclaim August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two as Women's Equality Day. I call upon the people of the, excuse me, I call upon the people of the United States to celebrate and continue to build on our country's progress towards gender equality, and to defend and strengthen the right to vote." Thank you. Thank you all for all you've done. Go and celebrate.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for all the good work. Again, this evening, I continue to learn about our community, women, and how this commission from the beginning, so thank you so much, Tricia, Sheila, Sharon, Angie, Albertine and Bonnie, for all you people for speaking here. As I close out the program and open up the dance floor, I have a few more thoughts for you. The Commission for Women is here to be an advocate for women in our area, to educate and support women-focused projects, to listen to the needs of the community, and to advocate for those needs. We all need to do the work to reach equality for all. So, before we leave here this evening, I would like to offer three simple things that busy people can do to make a difference. One, reach out to one organization and let them know that the Commission for Women is here in a resource, as a resource, and a funding opportunity. Two, we are in the process of a successor planning, as a few commissioners' terms are expiring, so there is an opportunity to get involved with us. If you are interested, please let us know. You can also join us at any of our meetings to share your comments and concerns with us. Three, take thirty minutes of your time to become aware of the issues affecting women today. Check out the National Organization for Women's website. Read the Indiana Return of Mortality Report from twenty twenty-one. It offers recommendations for individuals, organizations, and systems. Check out Community Conversations, Sister to Sister, a women's health initiative that aims to address barriers to improved health outcomes in the Black community, and to power community members as they navigate the medical system. Locally, we have many incredible organizations that are looking for volunteers and support. Doon Brook, Step in Stone Shelter, Minority Health, Halidin, Head Start, I mean, I could go on, but the point is, please, get involved. It needs three ways that we can make a difference together. Research, learn, share can help us evolve as a community. So, thank you so much for being here to support the Commission for Women. Thank you to our title sponsor, Horizon Bank. Thank you to our fantastic guest speakers for sharing their stories and your continued good work. Thank you for our performers for sharing their artistry this evening. Thank you to Mike and the staff at Orrock for hosting us. But most importantly, I would like to thank the event committee, Albertine, Bonnie, Angie, Sarah Jones, Charlene Lizzie, and all of the commissioners for making this event special. It was great to see all of us come together for this celebration. And finally, I would like to thank each and every one of you who came out to support us this evening. Now, let's enjoy, continue to enjoy each other's company, and get up and dance.